Welcome everybody to our. Library Board of Trustees meeting today and um welcome everybody that are here today. Um, thank you for. Scheduling this meeting, Julia, I know it's been it's been hectic and um. Trying to catch up from the pre from the last meeting, so there's a huge cap over there. So we're going to call this meeting to order um at. Six O two. And can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag. Of the United States. We do stands one nation.
Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Sorry, I'm having a bad reception on my end. Okay, um. Like to approve the agenda for today, oh, roll call, sorry. Miss Santos, Justin Santos. Doctor William J. Lex. Uh myself present and Lauren is excuse for today. Okay, approve of the agenda.
Uh I moved it to agenda to be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Approval of minutes from our meeting January eighteen twenty twenty two.
I moved the two minutes be approved as presented.
All in favor? Motion stance, thank you. Oh, presentation. So now I'm gonna turn this time to Miss Erin Jackson and Shelby. Two men for um our presentation today.
Thank you again so much for having me. Special thanks to Bill for for reaching out to me. I really appreciate the opportunity. To speak to all of you about about some bees um. I just wanted to start off by introducing myself for anyone that was late coming in. My name is Erin Jackson. I'm the. Bekeeping team manager in the Bay Area and Shelby, my regional manager is here with me today. Um to field any questions that I wouldn't be able to answer, but I highly doubt that um. Okay, I'm going to, is it is it possible for me to to gain some sort of ability to present some slides? Is that?
It should be. But ah here we go.
Ah, we're good. Wonderful. Alright. So I thought that it would actually be fun for us to start with a little game. And it's a very easy game, so does everyone know how to use the raise raise your hand function? Okay, excellent. So we're gonna play a game. It's called Beer Not a Bee. It's from one of our workshop trivia games. Very simple game. We're gonna test some bee knowledge out there. I'm gonna show you a picture of an insect. And you are going to raise your hand if you think it's a bee. And if you don't think it's a bee, then don't raise your hand, okay? We're just gonna do a couple of them just to just to get warmed up. Okay, first one. Hands up if you think this is a bee. Okay, excellent. Okay, it is a bee. This is a valley carpenter bee. And it's actually native to California. And that's a lovely picture of a passion fruit flower in full bloom. Okay, what about this one? Bee or not a bee? Do I see any hands raised? Okay, excellent. Not a bee. That's okay. This is a yellow jacket wasp um and wasps and bees are often confused. Uh they they do look very similar. Funny when we look at them on this picture, you're like those are completely different. Um wasps are a little bit more angular, have that really bright yellow to them. Um and generally when they fly, they're a little bit sharper. Bees tend to float around a little bit more. They're more fuzzy and have a more golden color to them. The other big difference is, you know, their their nature and their behavior. So wasps are are. Meat eaters, they'll hunt other insects, they hunt bees, and so they have a more aggressive nature to them. Bees are only ever searching for pollen or nectar. Those are the only things they eat. Um so they're never going to be kind of sniffing around your sandwich type of thing. That's not very interesting for them. So if you see one of those guys, it's probably a wasp. Okay, what about this one? Bee or not a bee? It is a bee. So this is actually a bee that's native to North America. It's a pale minor bee. Um a little bit tricky to spot, obviously, its pale color doesn't make it stand out, but um. Uh a native bee too to North America. What about this guy? Any bees? Anyone think this is a bee? It is not a bee. This is a bald faced hornet, so close cousin to the yellow jacket that we saw earlier. And this guy is mean. Okay. We're on our last couple here. Who thinks this is a bee? I wanna see all those hands up. We know this one. Okay, yeah, this is our bee. This is our European honeybee, and this is the species of bee that we work with. Uh we work with Italians and Italians are known for being very, very docile bees and very gentle bees. Um and that's why we work with with that particular breed of honeybees. Okay, this is the last one. So anyone think that this this one's a bee? This is not a bee. So this is a giant bee fly. These um this is a classification that we call mimics. So they mimic um the they mimic bees and bumblebees and other sorts of bees to be able to kind of. Take advantage of the same resources that they do. So it's a mimic. So now that we've kind of established. That we all have some biases and some ideas and some preconceived notions of what bees might look like. And what they might act like and their behavior. I'm hoping that, you know. We can we can leave those at with this bee or not a bee portion of the presentation. And open our minds to the thought that we might not know everything about bees. And I'm hoping that we can all certainly learn something today about them. So obviously, one of those classic stereotypes is that bees live in trees. And that is very correct. In nature, they wanna find a hollow space, which is a tree trunk is a perfect spot for them. Um they also like crevices in between rocks or your walls in your home. Sometimes they like drainage pipes as well, um but ideally they would find themselves inside of a tree. But the bees that we keep look a little bit different. Um they're actually inside boxes. And so while these boxes might seem like very quiet and inconspicuous from the outside. On the inside, that's where all the magic is happening. So when we open the cover, their entire world, we're kind of able to to open and examine and be able to. Kind of participate in, which is really beautiful. Bees are incredibly inspiring because they can teach us a lot about community. Um there they all work together in harmony, which is really beautiful. They can teach us a lot about teamwork. Everyone in the hive has a job and everyone does their job to the fullest. And they can also teach us a lot about fostering a better future for the next generation. Everything that honeybees in particular do and bees in general is always. For their next generation. It is always in the hope that they are generating a future that they're. That the young that they are helping raise are going to kind of move into. So we have three members of the colony. This one is our first one, the worker bee. Can anyone venture to guess the two others?
Well, certainly the queen.
Certainly the queen. Thank you, Bill. We have one other. You might um know it as more of like a pesky, annoying flying thing. But uh that has a camera on it. Yes, a drone. Um so we know drones more as a on the tech side, but inside the beehive colony, we call the male a bee a drone. So the female worker bee, she makes up ninety five percent of the population inside the hive. And she carries out all the work. So she will, from the day that she is born, she lives thirty days. Um and in that time, she will complete a plethora of different tasks. And her body will change throughout the course of of her growing up. Now, the drone, he's actually kind of unique in the sense that he only makes up five percent of the population inside the hive. He doesn't really have any tasks inside the hive. Um his main goal is to mate with other queens, not his own queen. Um he doesn't even have a stinger actually, so he can't forage. Uh he can't gather nectar or pollen. He doesn't make any honey. He really just hangs out inside the hive and eats. Eats the honey and then we'll go we'll go out flying. It's a good life for him. And then lastly is the queen, and we only have one of her. She's kind of allows the hive to to maintain its sense of harmony with her pheromone. And her sole job is to lay eggs. And in peak season, she can lay up to two thousand eggs per day. So she doesn't even have time to take care of the eggs that she lays. She she asks, kind of puts that on her worker bees to be able to do. Um and she can live up to four years. So her her worker bees live about thirty days. Drones live for about a season and then the queen will live for up to four years. So when you're born as or when you're when the queen ate lays her egg as a worker bee. Um it takes twenty one days for a bee to develop from an egg into a full grown bee. And they'll transform into a larva and then eventually they claw away at their cell and will emerge as a as a baby bee. And when they come out of their their um their honeycomb, they're. Straight to work. It's one of the coolest things about insects. They're so like instinctual. They know exactly what they have to do. So she'll do start cleaning cells. That's her first job because she doesn't really know how to do much else. So she's just cleaning cells, making way for the queen to be able to lay more eggs. Then she'll become a nurse bee, so she'll start taking care of all the the eggs that the queen will have laid. Making sure that they're warm and that they're well fed. And that they're protected. And then her body will kind of continue to change. And between days twelve to eighteen, she'll actually produce wax out of her body. And then she choose it and is able to build these honeycombs with it. So the wax actually comes out of their body. It's not something that they forage for it. Um they produce it themselves, which is very, very neat. And yeah, they build these beautiful uh frames of wax with them. She'll then become a ventilator bee. And this is a very important job, moving air, circulating air throughout the hive, and it allows her to develop her wing. Um strength because up until this point, she actually cannot fly. So it's only really in the last kind of. Quarter, last third of her life that she actually learns how to fly and is able to leave the hive and go and search for nectar. And pollen, and that's what we see here. So. Now that we kind of understand what's going on inside the box, let's talk a little bit about what we do with these bees and. And what goes on a little bit outside of the box. So we install beehives on rooftops across the city. And use the hives as a way to educate businesses, organizations and schools about the importance of bees. It's a turnkey service, which means that we provide all the care and maintenance that the bees need to thrive. And there's an educational component built into all of our services. Um which just allows us to be able to talk to people about why bees impact your everyday and how they impact your everyday. And why you should care about that. Um lastly is that that obviously we harvest the honey at a certain point of the season. And we're able to return that to you in jars with your with your official logo on it. So. Long story short is that we really believe that. When people fall in love with bees, we're like out here to make people fall in love with bees. And when they do fall in love with bees and you will fall in love with them. You want to foster a world and protect a world in which they can thrive, and that's what we're out here to do. So there's a couple of different goals and I'm just gonna run through three of them. Um to take concrete action to help the planet. That's really kind of what we want on the on the biggest. Um of stages, it would be like completely re-landscaping and like. Providing natural habitat for other um other bees as well as your honeybees. Um but we're also able to, you know, promote other onsite initiatives and other onsite sustainable programming through that. Um it's a great way to to impact your employees or anyone in your community by being able to talk about these sorts of uh projects. And this is a picture of me and my team. Uh we. Uh are partners with one percent for the planet and our partner is with the Pollinator Posse out in Lake Merritt. And we go out there once a month and volunteer with them. And we basically do garden maintenance and like actively are trying to green that space around Lake Merritt. We have a wonderful relationship with them. So anytime all of our clients are actually participating in this active greening of the city because one percent of all of our profits. Go towards this organization. So goal number two, community and workplace engagement. This is my favorite one. Um this can look so many different ways, right? The picture that you see on the right here is what we call a frame moment. And it's you can see the like the intensity in the moment of like holding a frame of bees for the first time is very. It's it's a it's a crazy feeling and it could literally change your life. It's a very cool thing to. To kind of break down those preconceived notions of what you think is gonna happen when you hold a thousand bees in your hands. And so obviously, there's no substitute for that, like in person experience. Um but we've become very custom because of COVID. Uh to be able to offer the same thing online. And what's nice about that is that you can reach a bigger audience. So like in this particular example, you can see we almost had a hundred and. Seventy participants tuning in to watch us do a live beehive opening. Um other ways that you can share this in your community and with your your employees or your network, I love this example. It's from Chicago. And the Tribune Tower in Oakland is going to be doing something similar where they're partnering with a local school or a local youth organization. To get them to paint their boxes. It's just some small way to to invite the community into your project, which I think is is so beautiful. And then another really awesome example of this is. You know, having a school, a local school come by and being able to participate in the workshops as well. And so that's what you're seeing here is somebody donated a workshop to one of their local schools. And we came and and did a little bit of a presentation. This is our our teammate Carmen in L A. And so last goal is link your actions with tangible products. So. The honey, we're not, we're not in the business of making honey. There are much easier ways to be making honey than. You know, climbing up to the thirtieth floor uh to check on the bees. But this is really that like time capsule of time and place. It represents the relationship that, you know, was formed between. The people uh inside the building and their bee colony. And it's really that it's the the kind of tangible item that you're able to then share and continue on the conversation. At home when you're putting a little bit of honey into your tea while someone's over. Um this is uh we have a beehive at Shepenese in. Um in Berkeley and they asked me to write a little blurb for their their menu just to describe a little bit of the relationship. And I think that captures this. This idea really well. The beehive on top of the roof at Shepenese is home to over a hundred thousand honeybees that spend their days doing the hard work of pollination. Honeybees do this work without harming any other living species. Instead, they give life to the community of flowering plants in Berkeley. This jar of honey harvested directly from the beehive represents the work of thousands of bees. And the caring relationship formed between the staff and our colony at Shepenese. So not only do their employees get to participate in, you know. Doing the workshops and being a part of the inspections, but now they've kind of brought that conversation a level further. Into being able to talk to anyone that comes into their restaurant about this project. And the last kind of thing that I wanna go over is, you know, just what's included in in each of our each of our packages. So there's always an educational component in them. That's that's really important to us. Um each hive receives a hundred jars of honey. So in the standard, that's one hive and deluxe, that's two, so two hundred jars of honey. There's always access to the My Hive app, which is basically like your bee's social media page where we do little updates about like what's going on inside the hive. Um and then, of course, like uh your your custom logo and label design for for each of those. So this is just a little bit of the pricing theme at our three different packages, uh just to give you some ideas of what of some numbers. Um but that is all, and I think I stayed within my twenty minutes, so I'm feeling pretty good about myself. Um if anyone has any questions, I would gladly take them.
Can you talk just a little bit about Elbiol and uh what its relationship is to what you do and? You know, a little very small bit of history.
Yeah, of course. Um so Shelby and I actually started the same year. Um that was almost four years ago now. And they're a company that's based out of Montreal. And it was these three guys that. Went onto one of his uncle's farm, Alex's uncle's farm. He has a bee farm and they're all city boys and they're like, how can we bring this back to the city? I want this in the city. And so they loaded up their truck with a bunch of beehives and brought them to the city and had no idea what they were gonna do. And this was about nine years ago now. And so they just started putting them in people's backyards. And they tried lots of different things, but ultimately what they found is that, you know, nobody was really interested in the honey. Everyone just wanted to be. Around the bees. And eventually they kind of were able to. To get convinced schools that this was like a very cool educational opportunity and convince businesses that this was like a really. Good way to involve your your tenants and the people inside your building um in a really special way. So from from Montreal, they grew into Quebec and into Toronto. And then kind of expanded into Chicago and Vancouver and then furthered their way into the West Coast. So. Um we're a little bit everywhere now, which is really exciting. Um but I actually come from uh the Montreal office. So that was a that was a very cool experience to be there. Does that answer your question, Bill?
Yes, yeah, that's great. Thanks. And could you also just talk very briefly again about uh? You know, the niche that bees play in sort of the web of life.
Oh, wow. Yeah, big niche. It's a huge niche. They're very important. So bees are. Absolutely integral to our food system. Um I don't know if anybody's ever taken a trip down through the Central Valley of California. Where so much of the food, especially in this state, is grown, but you'll often see, especially at this time of year. Beehives on the sides of of the highways because they're they're brought all the way over from Florida. All the way from the East Coast over to California um to to start the season off um with pollination. So bees are are absolutely integral to our food system. Without them, there would be. There would be no food. Um so that's not just honeybees, but that's also all sorts of other native bees as well. Um. So the. The the reason that they're so important is because they allow us to eat food. In in short. Any other bee related questions? Yeah.
Oh, actually more just about your organization. Vice President Lex mentioned that he ran into you um out at Oyster Point. Um but do you um? Can you tell us where else you you have beehives in in the Bay Area?
Yeah, of course. And so we have quite a quite a wide reach. It goes all the way down to San Jose. Um so in Santa Clara, in Mountain View, we have a couple at Oyster Point and at Gateway as well, so just across the street. And then in San Francisco, in the city, there are many bees on some incredibly beautiful buildings. Uh I mean, the views up there you would not believe. Um and then across the bridge in Berkeley and then uh out to Walnut Creek is as far east as we go as well.
And where do you place the hives?
Where do we place the hives? It's a big mixture. Um we're really lucky, at least like once you get to South San Francisco, there's a lot more land available. Um or a lot more space available, so we're able to do a lot of ground installations. And that's how you were able to run into Sarah at Oyster Point is. You know, it was a ground level hive where people are passing all the time. In San Francisco, space is less readily available, so those bees are on the rooftops. Um and what's nice about that is that they're getting the sun all day, so they're not sitting in the shade of of the tall buildings. They're getting the sun all day. Um so I'd say the more south you go, the more common it is that you'll see that the beehives are actually on the ground. Just because the spaces is available.
Erin, um. So you mentioned some in the city and some on the roof are installed on the roof, but mostly are on ground. And I'm very interested to to hear or even just to see. Were there any incidents or any concerns from the community about any um? Bee stings or, you know, I'm looking at the. You know, children or anybody in particular with a um a bee. Allergy or, you know, allergic to a bee sting. Were there any incidents that were reported or um? And how were, you know, I don't know if it happened or it didn't happen.
Yeah, no, I can definitely speak to that. Uh so. The the boxes themselves, when the time where there's the most activity going on around the hive is when we're actually there inspecting. And when we're there inspecting and opening the hives up. Um there's a level of safety precautions that we take and anyone that's gonna be accompanying us um is always offered a veil. Um there's usually a we'll spend five minutes just being like, I'm gonna open the hive and this is what I'll be doing. Um can everyone stay this amount back and I'll ask you to come closer as needed. As for um having anyone with a bee allergy or anything like that, I think what's really important about. Choosing to host a beehive is a providing some sort of signage around it, just alerting people to the fact that it's there. That honestly usually does the trick. As soon as you see the bees at work sign, you're like, okay, steer clear on the other side. Um uh and the other component of that is hosting opportunities for people to learn about it. Cause similarly to kind of how we just went through this presentation of, you know, bees are very gentle and very docile. There are ways that you can interact with bees and coexist with them. Without getting stung, without feeling like you're in danger. Um so I think that education, like knowledge is power. Um as we all know, but I think that that's one of the biggest safety components. Um to to the services, actually providing people with the proper knowledge to be able to interact with bees in a safe way. Um but um on the other hand, I think that the signage is is the other thing that usually goes with the ground installation. People often opt to have educational signage um that we provide. We have really wonderful like weatherproof educational signage that you can post up around um around the beehive.
Thank you. I I enjoy. That's. Really good to hear. And I even. I love the presentation. I really like. I'm not a big fan of bees. But I I love the idea of what else is out there. That, you know, for bees. And I even um like the fact that um. That you will do presentations for schools and we have a lot of schools here in Daly City. Um elementary schools that. Who knows? In the future, they might end up liking instead of be afraid of bees that they they will be educated for that. I didn't like the idea that if we were going to go for this. And I know Stephen here, this, you know, the process of this has to go to. You know, the city council and and everything. Um I like the fact that a local, you know, the city local will actually go. And what we're getting back, the incentives that we get back. Not just, you know. The these eh stuff like that, you know, it can really. Stress out the how the city is and um. The importance of having bees around. So this is beautiful. I don't know if anybody else has a question or comment?
Um yeah, thanks for the presentation. I I I took well, I. I think it's also like very timely as we're coming into spring to think about bees. I think it's also like very timely as we're coming into spring to think about bees and pollination. Uh, I think I'm a little more curious about you all's education program. Um, it feels like easier for me to imagine what it would look like to partner with schools, but. You know, like organizations or even like the city staff, for example, like what does that that look like? Are you all providing like materials and resources? Are you all like hosting workshops and programming?
Very good question. Yeah. Um, so like I said, the 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 education component can look a lot of different ways. We have like virtual options. If that's like a an easier way or more readily a way to way to reach people. Um, but as for hosting workshops, that's fully fully our responsibility. You're like dedicated beekeeper. Each beekeeper is like assigned to their hive, so you always have the same person returning. Um, and they're the ones that host the workshops. We provide all the material and all, um, yeah, all the material that's required will show up with. Um, if it's an on hand or yeah, on hands workshop. So as for those, we have like some different options for something like more of a seminar based, if that would. If that would be more interesting, but then we also have more hands on stuff like hands on honey extraction or candle making. Um, and for those ones, we can usually host the in-person ones. We can host up to thirty people for those. Um, so it kind of depends on on how, yeah, how it would be easiest to to reach people. Um, whether that's virtually or in person. And then if it's in person, if people would like to do a hands-on activity or more of an educational activity. The other thing to speak to as well when it comes to education is that every hive gets access to what we call My Hive. But it's really like a Facebook for your bees. And every time that your beekeeper visits the hive, they post what we call a buzz. And in that buzz, there are photos and updates, in addition to being able to track the hive health, the distance that the bees have flown. When the next visit is and all of these other components, so that whether you're physically able to access the hive. Physically able to go to a workshop, or if you're able to refresh a a link, you can still be connected to the project as well. And also gain a little bit of that education component. It's it's as simple as sending people a link, really.
Wow, thank you.
Would it, to pick up on what Shelby's saying, would it be possible to uh send some of those links? To the people who are present tonight, plus our missing trustee. Uh, so that they would have more of a sort of personal familiarity with what you're talking about and. And how the program works.
Yeah, I can send you the link for Oyster Point, the one that that you would have run into Sarah at. Um, so you can, you can take a look at that one for sure. I'll send that along. Alright, any other questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to be here today and. A very beautiful presentation.
Hmm, thank you so much. Thank you again for having me. It was uh it was a pleasure to to be able to talk to you.
Okay.
Excellent.
And Teresa, if I if I just might say something real quick, I I'm excited to learn more about this. My parents are both beekeepers, actually. Um, they, it's a small scale. They do it on their own. It's not like a job or anything, but um. This sounds like a really great opportunity for Daily City and um I'm excited to learn more. Thanks for doing that quiz with us. It was fun to see the pictures of the really. Cool bee species out there.
Awesome. I'm glad y'all enjoyed it. Um, I'll send you those links uh to you, William, and and I'll allow you to pass them on to everyone else.
Okay, super.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, so now, we're gonna move down to George's report. Okay, um. Ready, Joe?
Yeah, so um, the first item on our director's report is um an overview of an exciting new. Um, collection that that Sarah Spence um went and got a grant for. And um, so she's gonna share with you some of the details of it. We're really um thrilled to be able to participate in this. Um, Sarah, I believe you have a slideshow for us?
Yeah, I think I could share. You can share. See. Sorry. Uh, let me, sorry about that. Pull it up, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, so I um applied for a grant um through the State Library. Um, and they are called Read Together Kits. So. This is through um the California State Library, the um Institute of Museum and Library Services. And it's called a copycat grant because it was actually started by the Sacramento Public Library. So they're called Read Together Kits for a diverse literature home. So I'll explain. So what are they? So Read Together Kits are storytime kits for parents and early learning providers. Containing picture books featuring diverse characters. Um, that are specifically selected for sharing with toddlers and preschoolers in a group or one-to-one setting. Okay, um, so this is what it's, what they're going to be. There's gonna be ten themes. Um, I did send out a survey to some local early learning providers and staff that also work. Um, with young children to get some input about what themes would be most popular for families and. Um, early learning providers. There's gonna be a zippered tote bag that the books will be in. And then the contents will be, each kit will have five picture books. Half of the kits will contain at least one bilingual book and those will be um languages that are spoken in Daly City. Um, two of the books will be appropriate for toddlers, so those will include. Um, a lot of rhyming or repetition, um, books that encourage like movement. And only have maybe one or two lines per page. So those are gonna be like a little bit simpler. And we're also gonna pro- provide an information sheet with early learning tips and other resources. Probably including some songs or rhymes or activities that families or. Um, early learning providers can do with the with the children. So the grant specifics of this grant is um started December. Um, and then it goes through August of this year, so it's not a full year. Um, and we received six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which uh pays for all of the books. The tote bags and the printing that we'll be doing. Um, we will be making forty kits and it'll be ten kits per branch. So all branches will have these kits available. And that's, I'll close out my slide. So it's, it's very, um, it's very exciting because we're doing these kits. Um, and we're really focusing on diversity. Um, so we want books that have. Actual people in them. Um, they can have, we will have some with animals, of course, but predominantly we want people. So we want children and families to see themselves and other um diverse. Um, people that are um in the community. So that's kind of the point of it and um. Right now, I'm just choosing the themes and the books. I have to order the books and we will. Get them ready and processed, um, available for checkout before August. So I think I'm still in the beginning part of it, but um it's really exciting and. If you have any questions or suggestions, ideas or anything that you would like, um, as part of the kids, I know I did send it to Teresa. Um, Marilyn, one of your teachers replied to my to my um survey, so that was nice. Um, so, yeah. Excited.
Really exciting, Sarah. I I I've I've run into those Read Together bags before and so I work in Oakland and. What I do know is that families love it and teachers love them. So that's really exciting. Um. I I think a couple of things are coming up for me. Um, I'm curious around like in terms of putting the kits together, like. There might be opportunity of volunteer to help you. Um, I think either could even be opportunity for like patrons or young people. And I think that would be really cool. And then I my question is around the application process, like what are you thinking around how folks can apply to get a kit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're like kind of a way to to get access to them.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm sorry, I didn't, um, it wasn't clear on that. So these are gonna just be available for checkout. So it's just gonna be like a book or a movie or a Chromebook that we have available. Um. We're still trying to figure out um the marketing part of it because we do want to. Um, get this out, like why? We want um early learning providers to know about it. And we want families to know about it. Um, I was specifically, when I was applying for it, I was thinking of how. It's been during COVID and families, you know, for a while weren't even able to come into the library. And so we did start like. If people would call, we would put like little sets of books together. So I was thinking it's um. And we haven't had in-person storytime, so this, it's all together for them and they can just come and grab. You know, the bag and everything will be in it for them. Um, so that's like really nice. We're still trying to think of. Um, how we're going to display them. Um, and. Um, and market, like that's it. That's what we're trying to figure out. Um, the best way to do that, so. Any ideas?
I would, I I guess like, I guess like idea is summertime. I think summertime is a sweet time to put some reading kits together. I know you were saying August, but if there's any way to like have something earlier in the summer, that could be a kind of opening.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I think that that it's. The grant is finished in August, but um we definitely want to have them ready before that. Um, I forgot that we're also going to have a survey in each kit that hopefully families can. Give us some feedback about. Um, and we do, I do have to do reports and things like that for the state. Um, intermittently between now and August, so I do need to have some data before August to provide. So yeah, I think that would be awesome if we could like get those out by summer.
So Sarah, um, there's going to be, and I was waiting for this for announcements. Um, March twenty-sixth is the hundred years of Jefferson celebration of hundred years. And I'm not sure, um, if you can reach out to the school, you know, for a resource table. You know, for a booth, you know, for to introduce that over there. I know a lot of families with children are going to be there. That's one. And we also have a no, a event for Shine for tips that is going to be there at Jefferson in May, in eight, in May. So if you want a resource table, you know, I I am responsible one for the vendors and all that. You let me know. I'm just looking at ways how to put it out there in, not just at the library, but maybe out to the community. So they can see. Or you could bid it out flyers. You know, I I can help you do that.
Okay, yeah, I would love to, for sure. Um, are you talking about Jefferson High School?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I'll send you an email and get those dates. I would love to.
Uh, Sarah, let me just compliment you on successfully bringing it to Daly City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Teresa, just to let you know, library does have a table at the event, so we're excited to um offer resources there.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, sorry, I did have one other question and maybe you mentioned this and I just missed it. What? What is the total number of kits that you have for distribution?
Oh, we're gonna have forty kits. So each branch will have ten. And um I'm still, I was kind of trying to decide if we were gonna have the same. Uh, at each branch or, you know, I kind of wanna do more than than just ten themes, but um. Oh, one thing I forgot to share, um, there is a criteria that the Sacramento Public Library came up with. When they were creating the kits. Um, so each book has to kind of fulfill some of the criteria, like either. Um, the characters have to be diverse, so they have like um black, indigenous, um. LGBTQ, um, either the characters or has to be either the author illustrator. So I'm look, so I'm like actually tangibly touching every single book and looking through each book to make sure that it fits. At least some of that criteria. If it doesn't fit any, then it's not gonna be part of the kit. So it's like a, it's kind of a timely. Time-consuming process, but it's really amazing. Um, so just because of that, because it takes so long to do that. I'm not sure if I'll be able to do more than ten themes uh at the beginning, but maybe this is something we could add on to. You know, if it's popular, if people like it, cause there's obviously more than ten themes that we could use.
So Sarah, I I are you saying that you're going to be picking the themes or? I know you reach out to Peninsula to, and um, I don't know if Marilyn replied for the.
Yeah, she did.
But have you reached out to the other um local preschoolers? You know, the early child development, like Bay Shore has a, you know, has the preschool, um. You can reach out to their preschool teacher and see what themes they have in mind.
Yeah, yeah, there, um, I have reached out to a bunch. Um, I haven't heard back from everyone, so. Um, I'm just, I need to start the process, um.
Right away.
You know, because I, uh, we also have a project manager who's like helping me make sure I'm on the time, time schedule. I'm on the right schedule. Um, and she was telling me that I should probably order the books within the next two weeks. So that's kind, that's like, you know, everything. If I had all the time in the world, I would just be waiting for everyone, but. Um, I can reach out again, just to, yeah, just to get more of a um. Uh, feeling from other other providers. I haven't chosen yet. I just, I'm really just kind of like going through each. Theme that I uh. I offered, um, and then some of the teachers did provide some other themes. I let them tell me if there's other themes. And I'm kind of just choosing books for each theme and then seeing how many I get, you know, like I might not have. As many themes for, or as many books for one theme as I have for another. So it's kind of like that, but I can definitely reach out again. Have a little bit of time.
I'll reach out to, I'll do my part to hear here from me by tomorrow, so.
Okay, okay, awesome. Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome. Okay, um, anything else on the Read Together Kits? Okay, so Book to Action Neutral Rescue.
So we have another fabulous librarian who has gone out and gotten us a grant. Um, so Zach um has a a grant called Book to Action that he's gonna, um, he has a presentation to talk about that. Um, and also I wanted to mention that Zach Zach will be promoting um Book to Action and I can also promote the Read Together Kits. At the um special event for um the Centennial of of um Jefferson High School. He'll be there.
Yes, I will. March twenty-sixth, looking forward to it. Uh, okay, let me share my screen. We'll start the slide. Oh, no, no, um. And so, okay, so, um, yeah, so the Daily City Library, we received a grant uh for a book to action. So I'll go to the next screen. So um it was a grant for uh two thousand nine hundred seven dollars. So yes, it was less than Sarah's grant. But. But.
It is a credit.
It is, it's something, yeah. And um so Book to Action is a citywide reading program. The book that uh we select as part of Book to Action is, usually it's like an adult book, although the programming that we're planning is. A lot of it's really family programming, so it'll be for everyone. Um, it's uh, it'll be this spring. Uh, we will distribute copies of the book to the public and we have a lot. Uh, we will distribute copies of the book to the public and we have a lot of events planned. Um, so we're, like I said, we're encouraging everyone to uh read this book, Mutual Rescue. We have a few partners, so we're partnering with the Peninsula Humane Society and with Mutual Rescue. Um, so I'll make a little note here about Mutual Rescue, so um. Mutual Rescue, it's an organization, it's not just a book, um. They're an organization that promotes animal adoption and it's really about um rescue animals, so um homeless pets or homeless animals. Um, it was started by Carol Novello, she's also the author of the book, um, and she will be speaking to our audiences. And um, she uh partners with David Whitman, he is a filmmaker and he made some films. That we'll be presenting and he will, actually, he will be presenting them to our public at the end of June, um. And these are programs that I'll get into in the timeline in just a minute, um, so we'll go to that now, so. The program will start in April, we're gonna have a kickoff event, April twenty-sixth at the Ceremony Main Library. And at the kickoff event, um, the Peninsula Humane Society will have um some therapy dogs for people to meet. And we're going to distribute copies of the book um to people who start stop by. Also, in April, we're going to distribute art kits. So um, the art kits are gonna be a program that we're calling Paint Your Pet. Um, and then they'll have a canvas, brushes, paints in them, and then hopefully people will bring the. The paintings back and we'll do a display. We're gonna, we're gonna see how many we get back. So um, if we get a lot back, we'll kind of see what we have and use our library space here at uh John Daly. Um, to do the exhibition of the paintings that come back to us. Um, so in May, we have planned an author visit with Carol Novello. And then, like I said, the paintings will come back to us hopefully in May. And then um, in June, we'll do the art exhibition here. Um, we're going to do uh an inspiring action social media campaign, so this will be every day in the month of June, we'll. Have people in the community share stories of how adopting a pet from a shelter, you know, changed their life or improved their life. Um, and then we'll have a film screening with um David Whitman, that will be at the end of the month, so um. So that's the program. So um, one thing I didn't mention in the slide, so the name Book to Action. It implies these actions that we're doing, the social media campaign, the story share through that. Um, and that's the idea of Book to Action, if you were wondering where that title comes from, so it's meant to be. Um, inspire some kind of action within the community. And the reason we picked this book is because it's it's uplifting. And we think it has broad appeal in the community, um, you know, there's a lot of bad news in. In the world right now, so hopefully this will be something um positive, so. So, are there, were there any questions that you guys had?
Zach, would you be able to have flyers to be out to all the libraries about all these upcoming important dates I'm looking forward to?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I'm working on that. I think, I think they're almost done, they probably will be done this week, so yeah, those will be coming.
And and congratulations and thank you. You know, a penny, even if it's a penny. It will make the dollar. Without that penny, well, we won't have a dollar, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either, just wanna piggyback on Teresa, just wanna give you all props for for the grant. I do, I'm seeing like. The activities that are popping up for the libraries and I think it's just really exciting. Um, I've never, I I haven't even heard of this book, but I, what I do know as a dog owner in Daly City is that I ran into a lot of other. Like pet owners who have adopted pets, so I think there's like, I I I'm hoping that you all will get like a good audience. But there's definitely like a group of people in Daly City with adopted pets. And I'm I'm one of them, so I might, I might.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can use your. Yeah, maybe we can use your uh story or if you wanna say something about.
My gosh, I have so much, so many, okay, I I'll connect you with that.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, um, update on restoration of hours at Bay Shore and John Daly Libraries.
Sure, um, yes, uh, the restoration of hours has happened at at John Daly and Bay Shore uh libraries. And so I just, I I think you probably already do know, um, but I was gonna share the. Share the hours here so that you can um see, see what what we have going on at these libraries. We have five days a week and we do have an evening, it's Wednesday at John Daly and Thursday at um. At the Bay Shore Library and um, here I can open up. That helps. And um, so far, so good. We did, we did do a soft opening so that we wouldn't have any confusion of people. You know, coming um to these hours before we actually have them open, um, so it's taking a little time for people to discover it. Um, but um, the staff, including Zach, who's at at the John Daly Library, have been working hard to get get the word out. Um, I know that the the D C P L A board um has been assisting us with letting people know we're using all of our channels. Of course, our social media and our newsletter and all that. Um, and any um, anyone you wanna share this great news with, we're always excited about that. Um, the the staff at the two libraries that have new hours, I've been really working hard to um. To really make it a destination for people to to get activity going on and a lot of energy, um. We uh, I, on the right side, you can see there's a photo of the um flag that just got planted today to. To let people who might be walking by the library know that um, that the library is now open Monday through Friday. Um, there's a, there are a couple of flags out at Bay Shore as well, um, so. Yeah, no, it's um, I think uh everyone's really happy to have um, have the full service back at these two locations. They're um really important parts of these these particular neighborhoods and and I know that the patrons coming in, the families coming in. Um, you know, they missed us and and um, they have a lot more opportunity to come in and engage with with the programs and borrow the materials. Use the services, so um, it's it's been a a long time coming and we're very happy that we have finally arrived. Alright, so not much of an update, other than it finally happened and um, it's going very well so far. I did um email all of you um a flyer, if you would like printed copies of it, please do let us know. Um, we're happy to provide that, and if you have um any leads on other ways that we can um reach out to our community and let them know. I know Zach and Christine out at the Bay Shore Library have been um visiting community groups and schools and.
Thank you, Taylor, thank you. It it's already started, huh?
Yes.
Yes, okay, wow, well, better late than never, you know. Um, thank you, Hugh, Stephen, thank you, the city for allowing us to have those extra hours, appreciate it. Okay, um, now it's trustees report, so we're gonna go with board vacancy. And um, I think earlier before we started, we had this conversation with Dr. Lex. And um, maybe Stephen will have a little update for us, and if not, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Lex, go ahead and ask, um, I think you had a question earlier about that.
Well, my question uh to Chela and uh probably to you, Stephen, is. When there's a vacancy on the Board of Trustees, uh, is there a way to know whether or not there are. Uh, active applications for that vacancy and if there's any way to uh. You know, try and encourage council members, especially the ones that have, you know, a vacant appointment to make. To review those so that we can fill that vacant seat and have a full board. Uh, not only for better representation and participation and discussion, but also to avoid, you know, the the possibility of. Not meeting due to lack of a quorum.
So the way the process works is that um any applicants we do receive go through the city clerk and the city clerk notifies the full city council of the application. Um, we can certainly send a reminder to the council members about appointments, um, but it really is up to them to make that appointment. And um, and we we can continue uh as we've done in the past, um. Advertise the vacancy on our social media to generate some more interest too.
Right, well, you know, my concern, and I don't know uh if we have active applications or not, I believe we have at least one. Uh, and hopefully more than that, but uh soliciting applications, uh. Is it gonna help us if, you know, council members don't review those applications and act on them? You know, that's what I'm wondering, how, if if there's a way that we can. You know, facilitate that or encourage that or, you know, let the council know that that this is a priority. And it's important for us to have, you know, a a full uh number of members.
Yes, um, council members actually watch these meetings as well, so they they stay in the know of what's happening on the library board, um, but we can certainly send a reminder on our end. But that that's as much as I think we can do at this point.
Thank you.
I think also into in to addition to that, um, it's just even, I think so, as for us as um library trustees. That is our responsibility even to being those things and to be attending those meetings and. Then we can kind of totally put it there as a reminder to them, hey. One of the public comments is we have a vacancy, um, and I know I'm not trying to make excuses for the, for the city, but um, for the councils, but. You know, just a reminder, oh, they really want this vacant seat to be taken, so I'll make an effort of myself and whoever's available. To participate those meetings, those council meetings, as long as we know when and um, and I know it's still on on Zoom. Okay, so we will put that back on our agenda building for next meeting. Thank you, Dr. Lex. Um, public engagement and outreach, so um, Chela, if you may, please, um. If you can create a Google Calendar for all of us, and then with all the upcoming events that just. Then it to us so that we we know who's going to participate and who's coming as a representative ourselves. And if we, you know, as long as we have um our schedule permitted. And I don't know if the rest of my fellow board members can agree to that. Um, but feel feel free to chime in to how can we make this more available to us? Or what else do we need to do to engage and outreach?
Yeah, I like the idea of uh some sort of calendar invite, um. I think the, I think the the way that we do it for the trustee meetings have been really helpful to just kind of just take note. Um, I also feel like, and maybe it just feels a little bit, cause we didn't have our meeting last week, but. Um, I think just like if there could be like a um a monthly email to us as well with the event. I feel like you've done this before, Chela. Maybe missed the last one, but I think those are always helpful.
I know I visited Bay Shore like two or three weeks ago. Um, to, and I was able to meet uh, produce myself, I, you know, introduced myself to Christina. And um, over there, so Bay Shore is still looking good. So I don't know about you fellow members, um, we can spread ourselves out to. To the libraries that within your circumference, so or in your perimeter, you can visit on your free time. And then, you know, you can check in when we do our meetings, we can report in from those libraries, um. That's really up to the free agency of each and all of us, no pressure. You guys like that? So I will be committed to Bay Shore and then I happen to, because I work around here. In eighty-seven, I'll go visit Westlake. Okay, okay, um. Does anybody else anything else on that? I know with COVID restrictions and still, everything is kind of still close up until further notice, okay? Report from Daly City Public Library Associate, D C P L A.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I'm Jose Villalobos, I'm one uh one of the new, uh, one of the new directors for the D C P L A. Um, you know, I've been, I've lived in Daly City my whole life, I worked at Jefferson High School, so. I figured um, it's something funny to kind of do for the community as well, so um, definitely, I know library services has been something. Me and my wife discuss a lot, you know, just kind of, and seeing that like a lot of improvements have been done over the, over the years, um, something that we definitely am. Have a passion for here in Daly City. Um, so, um, there's a couple of things coming up, so this um. This Wednesday, sorry, kind of thrown off with uh just how the week has been, but uh, March seventeenth, uh, Thursday. Uh, we're gonna have our ninth annual Saint Patrick's Day luncheon um at the Como Community Center. Uh, so far, we've raised about eighteen thousand dollars in sponsorships and pre-event raffle tickets. Uh, also the funded need donations, so uh eighteen thousand dollars have so far been um raised. Um, uh, D C P L A is also co-sponsoring the March twenty-fourth event, uh, the Library Author Talk with Stacy B. And has donated books uh for sale at the event. And other, another thing going on is um our Daly City Youth Poet Laureates uh event. Um, we've invited uh, um, so. Hold on, I say, uh, mayor, uh, ac- actually, um, so that's coming up, but before that, uh, Mayor Das Smogball. Has invited our current Daly City Youth uh poet laureate, uh, Madeline Herr, uh, as well as the current applicants uh for this year. Um, uh, to um perform their original poems at the Council of Cities event. Uh, where mayors from each city in the peninsula uh in San Mateo County meet. And also, uh, save the date for the actual commencement event for the twenty-two, twenty-three Daly City Youth Poet Laureate Events. It will be April twenty-eighth, uh, that that'll be a Thursday night at six thirty P M. Uh, the event will take place in person at City Hall, uh, each of our finalists and our current youth poet laureate will perform. Um, we will name the next Daly City Youth Poet Laureate at that event and it'll be followed by a reception. Um, and those, the finalists will be receiving invitations in early April. And as as will you, you you'll be receiving invitations for that event in early April.
Okay, thank you, Jose, it's really nice to see you, right? If you're doing beautiful work.
Thank you.
And will be attending that um event on the seventeen, I'm not sure if my. If any of you guys will be attending, but I will be there for that event. Okay, announcements and communications. Um, I don't wanna be the only one talking for announcements or communication. Okay, Chela.
Sorry, uh, I I just have a few library things, if it's okay, I'll share my screen. So you can see the three fires that people made. Um, so we have um that author talk that um Director Villa Lobos um talked about a little bit earlier. Sponsored by the Daly City Public Library Associates, um, we have Stacy Lee, who has written a Reese White, Reese's. Y A book club pick, um, The Downstairs Girl, and so this is um, this is a Y novel. And um, it's gonna be a virtual author visit, where um, the author will talk about um, the book and the process of writing the book. Um, especially in the context of um, of Women's History Month, and then um, be able to answer questions. Um, it's, we are asking people to um, to register for that. And um, you can find that and all of these things on our um, on our activity calendar on our website. And then also upcoming is um, a workshop of, um, this is a partnership with the Pacific Stroke Association. Where they will be um helping people learn to recognize the early signs and symptoms of a stroke, which is um incredibly. Uh, important for um, reducing the damage that can happen in in a stroke and and um. Creating better outcomes and and possibly even saving a life, so it's a good thing um to be able to recognize in yourself and anyone around you, so. Um, uh, that's also gonna be Zoom, cause we're we're doing everything virtually. Um, and then, um, just for funsies, uh, there's a a Name That Tune Beatles uh trivia night. Um and then um just for funsies, uh there's a a Name That Tune Beatles uh trivia night that's got, so for everyone after you've attended and and eaten all the um corned beef and cabbage at the Saint Patrick's Day uh celebration for D C P L A, you can go home and put on some slippers and unwind with some some Beatles trivia. And um finally, uh this just happened, breaking news, um we uh we were lucky enough to um get drop boxes for ballots at two of our locations, this really um is gonna um expand the opportunities for people uh for dropping off their ballot during elections. Um previously, there had been two boxes in front of um City Hall that are there permanently. Um but now there is one here, you see, um this is John Daly Library and War Memorial, it's um next to the book drop. And we also have one, a little photo, um have one uh right in front of the Ceremony Main Library, so lots of opportunities for people to conveniently vote and make their voice heard in our democracy. So those are the the exciting announcements I have.
Thank you. Thank you for those. Um so for me and my end again, March twenty sixth, Jefferson. Um that's the closest one that is coming. And then um another announcement, uh I think that's the only announcement that I have of now. Anybody else from my fellow members? Board members, Dr. Lex?
Uh yeah, I just wanted to compliment uh Chela on the flyers announcing the expanded hours uh to, you know, our two smaller libraries, I thought they were attractive and, you know, very informative and clear. I would like to have eh an item, we could call it a bee project or whatever, for discussion at the next meeting on the agenda to uh discuss uh, you know, our thoughts and feelings about what we heard tonight and whether or not uh, you know, we want to consider uh some sort of a an action item or uh, you know, whatever the consensus might be. Uh and then the last thing I wanted to mention, uh and this is for me, because I like to be in in touch from time to time, uh for example, I spoke to you, Teresa, about putting the uh urban beekeeper presentation on the agenda and I had your contact information. Justine, I don't have any contact information for you and if you know, it's okay with you, I would appreciate it if that could be shared and you're certainly welcome to have mine because I know there will be times when, you know, I've got a bright idea and uh I want somebody to bounce it off of and and I'd like you to be in that list of potential people to talk to.
Yeah, I would love to connect, I actually just saw your email, Dr. Lex, from a couple of, a while ago, I just saw it today, so I responded to you. I would love to connect with you offline too.
Okay, super, well, if you've got my email address, can you just, you know, send me other contact information and I'll reciprocate? And just as an aside, since you're on screen right now, uh I love your background as well, I told Teresa, hers was very beautiful and so is yours. I'm curious, what is that behind you?
Oh, this behind me is a conservatory of flowers.
Okay, terrific.
Their night bloom event, yes.
For all the bees.
Came on theme today.
Okay. Well, maybe um at the end of the meeting or sometime today, all of us can please submit our contact information the most um that you wanted to be contacted, if it's good, you know, via text, via email or your telephone, in that way, we kind of respect each other's time to see, you know, which source or which way do we communicate with each other more efficiently and more structured. Okay, so agenda building item, Dr. Lex, I've already mentioned one. Um the other one will be still on board vacancy and um then uh what else do we need to? Justine, any suggestion?
No, I I think I I feel like I would like us to spend a little bit more time discussing the bees, so maybe we'll just get space and time to get all our questions and and think about it. I don't have any other additional topics from that.
I also like to thank Sarah for for um coming, you know, we had a Zoom with the Peninsula Family Children Preschools and they really enjoyed, they have missed going to libraries. I don't remember any time they went to the library. Thank you for taking the time to do that with the with the with the whole school, thank you so much. Dr. Lex?
Uh yeah, uh Stephen, I noticed when I was looking for contact information, I went to the Board of Trustees uh section of the website and it indicates when terms expire. And I noticed that there are terms expiring in twenty twenty two uh or that have expired. And I was wondering if there's a way to call that to the attention of the council so that reappointments can be made or continuing appointments can be made and that we don't run into any question of whether or not a person should be serving or uh, you know, whether we have enough members to constitute a quorum.
Um yes, I I believe uh Teresa was just reappointed last night at the city council meeting, congratulations, Teresa. And let's see, who else is up this year?
I was hoping not, but thank you.
And then um Justine, you're up in October, so we have some time before then.
Yes, we have some time.
Thanks.
But thank you, thank you, Dr. Lex, for, yeah, for for being on top on that, you know? And myself, I just serve until they tell me, uh, you're no longer qualified to be served anymore, Teresa, I said, here, I'm glad you couldn't pass the baton to somebody else, but I appreciate it. Okay, so uh public comment? Nope, okay, well.
Not appeared to be any.
I thank you, everybody, for your time, thank you so much, and it's really, you know, tap on the shoulders for the grant makers, you guys are the bread makers, whether it's small or big, it what matters, it's the little things that matters a million times. Thank you, D C P L A Representative Jose for being here. My fellow trustees, Stephen, it's always good to see you here. Thank you so much, and Sarah and Chela and the rest of the library's staff. Please send our requests and our sincere thanksgiving for all the hard work. Have a wonderful day, a night, and have a great week.
You're here.
Bye. Thanks all.